Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Thursday, December 16th, 2021, 6 o'clock PM, meeting of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Robert Tatro. I am the Chair and I'm officially calling the meeting to order. As you know, some of you or most of you have been here in the past for the last couple of meetings. I have a script to read before we begin and a couple of ground rules to go over and I'll try to get that through that as quickly as I possibly can. And then we'll get the hearing started. So this is for the hybrid participation. We're going to confirm member access first. So as a preliminary matter, my name is Robert Tatro, Chair of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. In an effort to reduce background noise, I'm going to ask that you all please mute your phones at this time and only unmute if you're going to speak. Not referring to your electronic devices, that's for the folks that are calling in at home. So the first thing I'm going to do is call the roll call of the members and make sure they are here. So if you could please respond in the affirmative if you are present. Vice Chair Michael Maron.
Present.
Larry Chacolo.
Present.
Richard Cussy.
Present.
Ms. Roach, Megan Roach.
I'm present tonight.
Okay, so I don't have Megan Roach up on the screen here yet. We'll move on. Peter Jones.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Kaitlyn Bush.
I'm here.
Okay, excellent. So town officials.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I believe Megan Roach sent an email stating that she would not be attending.
Oh, thank you. So part of that is we'll bring another, we'll bring an alternate member forward when I finish with this. Thank you. So town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Building Commissioner Caleb Moody. Here. DDIS Lynn Use Clerk Jinder Buto.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, so the introduction to the hybrid meeting. Good evening. This is an open meeting of the Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals for Thursday, December 16th, 2021. We are now calling the meeting to order. This meeting is being conducted in both person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, and extended on June 16th, 2021. For this meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals is convening either in person or by remote participation for the public. For the public to access the meeting, please call by telephone 1646-749-3112 and enter access code 944-571-349, or you can join by your computer by going to gotomeeting.com. In the upper right corner, you'll see a window for join and then you're going to enter 944-571-349. The remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, those members of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals, employees, members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you may broadcast may be captured by the recording. The materials, all supporting materials have been provided to members of this body and are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting, business, and ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules. I, Robert Tatro, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name and provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford the public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask a member of the public who wishes to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call them each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote in this meeting will be taken by a roll call vote. If we do experience any technical difficulties, we will suspend the meeting while attempts are made to resolve and repair. Also, that is for the purpose of keeping accurate minutes, noting any disconnections and reconnections for the members that are also calling remotely. So with that being said, we have one member that has not attended this evening and that would be Ms. Megan Roach. So as the Chair, I'm going to move Peter Jones forward. He will be a full voting member this evening for making decisions during these hearings. Mr. Jones, go ahead, sir.
I'm wondering if Ms. Bush would prefer to be the one to step forward.
So I can actually ask that. So have you, Mr. Jones, have you attended all the meetings? And you're aware of all of the hearing continuations for the first particular 6 o'clock PM applicant?
I don't remember if I attended in October.
Ah, perfect. Okay. So with that being said, Ms. Bush, are you here?
I'm here.
And are you comfortable with acting as a full member for voting purposes this evening?
I am.
Excellent. Thank you. So Mr. Jones has deferred. He would prefer not to in case he missed any of the meetings. So I do appreciate his honesty and Ms. Bush will be moving forward as a full voting member of the panel this evening. So with that being said, we have a 6 o'clock PM applicant, Faza Management Incorporated requesting special permit under Section 3222 and 4351 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to build 12 townhouses on property located at 262 Central Street, Auburn, Mass., map 56, partial 82. This is a dual continuation from 10/21/21 and 11/18/21. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it's a continued hearing, so I don't believe we actually need a motion to open.
Ah, okay, correct. You are very on top of that. Thank you. I appreciate it. So with that being said, is the applicant present? Okay, sir, if you could approach the microphones here and if you could give an overview of what you'd like to try to accomplish. So we're going to have you come up here this evening. So folks, if, what we're going to do is we're going to turn it over after he's completed his presentation of public comment. If there hasn't been one already, just we'll prepare to have you sign in. So you have, we have your names and addresses for the minutes of the meeting.
Through the Chair, if I may, we can have any residents that wish to comment come up to this microphone. That way the applicant can stay in his seat.
Perfect. Thank you.
Well, first of all, my name is Jose Guzman. I'm the architect of record for this project. Good evening, board members and residents. We were, we first appeared before the planning board with a different, different development than we're currently showing. At that point, we had 12 townhouses and if, in order to do the 12 houses, townhouses, we were planning to demolish the existing house that's there. At that point is where I first learned that this is considered a hysterical house. Apparently that was not public knowledge. I was not aware of that. Thereafter, we, we went back to the drawing board and we're proposing to keep the existing house. And it's in dire need of, it's been abandoned, it's vacant, and so it needs a lot of work. But my client is willing to invest money in restoring it. And, and we, instead of having 12 townhouses, it's been reduced to seven. Two buildings that have, that are duplexes and one building that is a townhouse structure for a total of seven dwelling units plus the existing two-family house for a total of nine. We thought a lot about how to approach this. We believe that this development is consistent with the character, existing character of the neighborhood. We thought it was really important to, to address the street as all the houses are facing the street. They have a formal entrance. And we wanted to define that edge of the street that is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. We believe that the scale of our proposal is also consistent with the existing neighborhood. We do plan to provide screening at the perimeter, especially where we are adjacent directly to the neighbors on the northern side. And, and it's, I think that it's an interesting approach that the side is sloping down. And instead of having a development that is, that is linear, we're stepping down each duplex or each unit so that it's, it's a nicer scale to it rather than having a just a, there's more movement in both horizontal and vertical. And so the mass is broken down and that's what helps it to be more in, in the scale of the neighborhood. We also felt that it was important to address Central Street so the other duplex is facing Central Street. We did request to come before you prior to the going to the, to the planning board again. We are hoping that you grant us a special permit. Then we will follow up and go return back to the planning board.
Okay, is there anything else you want to add or are you all set for the time being?
That's it.
Okay. So I'm confident in saying, I think I know what the next step will be. But I think if I just want to verify with the members of the board, we want to hear the public comments before we reserve our comments for later.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, but I, before we do open up the public comment, would it be prudent to just remind those that are here and watching at home the reason why this applicant is before our board? And the fact that we are in the district with this application, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the primary reason why this applicant is before us is because we're stewards of the Auburn Town Aquifer. And that in fact, if it were not in the aquifer, it would be likely that this applicant would not be before us.
Correct. So I think, just to be clear, what Mr. Maron is referring to is the zoning board really, what our sort of main responsibility here is to make sure that we protect the aquifers in town. If we were to, regardless of what the outcome of this hearing is, grant the permits for this evening, it really is just based on the fact that we feel as though the applicant is adequately protecting the aquifer that's below there. So it's really the town wells that we're concerned with. The remainder of the plans that you see that are here this evening would really go to all for the planning board, which is where you would be more concerned with trying to modify any plans. But you were certainly welcome to discuss any part of the project that concerns you. There's no reason why you can't, just to be clear. So, but that's really what we are here for this evening is to determine whether or not the project itself is compliant with aquifer protection zoning bylaws.
So did I adequately claim that? Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Through the Chair, can I just elaborate a little bit on that?
You certainly can.
So this use in, in the Residence A District does require a special permit for the use in addition. So it's not just the aquifer. The use does require a special permit in this district.
Right, okay. I didn't say that properly. I apologize, but yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
May I add to that?
If I may, before you do, sir, thank you for that clarification, Caleb. And I think that's an important point because I want to make sure that our scope is narrowed and direct exactly where we want to be. But the fact that it does include a special permit would give us that authority. Thank you, sir.
Yes, I, I do want to add to that, that right now, it's, it's listed on the, on the agenda. It's noted as that is subject to 3.2.2.2.
Right.
That was when we had all townhouses. Now it's been, we have duplexes, right? So it's, I believe it's also subject to 3.2.2.1.
It is. But again, the reason why Mr. Maron requested for the clarification is our primary concern here is with the aquifer protection. We're not limiting the fact that it's a special permit that in relation to 3222. So we understand that. It's just that we were certain, looking for clarification, I'm understanding where our primary scope is. So with that being said, can we move forward to the?
Thank you for indulging, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, so folks, I know a lot of you have a lot to say. So is there anyone that would like to speak? If so, could you please go over with Caleb to the lectern? Introduce yourself. Just give us your name and address and you can talk about your concerns and we can try to work through those with the applicant. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, so my name is Nancy and I live on Prentice Ave. And I'm not directly there, but I'm like diagonally.
Okay.
So I have a huge concern with, they just took it and flipped it now. The whole building part of it and they're going to open up all of Prentice Ave. We have a huge water problem as it is now. We have low like wires that hang. So all the construction and all that stuff is going to be coming up and down our street. I've already had the wires ripped down once off my house and it's going to continually happen once they do this. They're not thinking about the parking pot. That street is so small right there that it's, you, you're going to put five driveways off Prentice Ave and I'm not sure why we're even allowing a special permit. This is a house that's on 262 Central Street. So why are we opening up Prentice Ave? We don't, we can barely park on our own streets in front of our house. So you're going to put five driveways across the street? There's going to be no way we can park in front of our own houses on this street. This street is super small. There's no, there's no sidewalks. There's nothing. So everybody has to walk in the street. People park in the street. Another thing I have is the water pressure. So what's going to happen? Are they going to like look into a water tower? Because the water pressure is so low and if they're going to have those open, they're going to hook right into Prentice Ave. And the other issue is, back in the day, Bernie had a salvage company. He dumped oil, antifreeze, all that. Are they going to test all that land? Are they going to send all those, that contaminant stuff to us to let us know what we're going to be breathing in? Those are just like certain concerns that we should consider before we go forward. And honestly, the, the traffic coming in and out of there, nobody takes Central Street. Nobody does. Anybody who lives on Central Street takes Prentice Ave. You're going to multiply it. In the Auburn town laws and bylaws, it says that they're supposed to lessen congestion. This is not lessening congestion at all. This is putting it tenfold to a super quiet neighborhood. So I just wanted to thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What was the address of that person who just spoke?
Eight Prentice Ave.
And the last name?
Arison.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. So my name is Steve Fontaine and I own the property on the backside on Thomas Ave. So if you're looking at the map here, the five trees that showed my property. So there's the Donahues on the corner. This is my property and then my second property. So this neighborhood has always been a single-family style neighborhood. I'm not sure why we would be entertaining the idea of putting multiple, multiple properties. We're showing seven on this map. Originally, we started with 12. As opposed to maybe what happened a number of years ago on the opposite side of Prentice Ave, on the corner of Central and Prentice, where the whole, directly opposite where the Holstroms used to live, there was a house that was sold there. I think maybe the current owners are here. And they subdivided that lot and they put two other houses on there, right? And it conformed to the neighborhood, all single-family homes. I don't think any of us have an issue or had an issue with that. But when we, when we try to implement something like this and we're transforming the entire neighborhood to put condos in or call them whatever you want, the amount of traffic influx, the privacy from the abutting neighbors and whatnot, all goes away. If they were to take this lot and just put up two additional single-family homes, I know it's all about money here and trying to generate more tax revenue, but that would then allow us to conform to what the existing conditions are of the neighborhood. And I think that's really what we're really concerned with, right? We don't want to see a mass influx of a lot of vehicles. Prentice is a highly traveled road today. Buses going up and down and so on. Now you're adding seven more structures in addition to whatever they do to the existing Anderson House. That's a lot more cars, a lot more kids, and a potential safety hazard. So that's what I have to say. I don't really support this. I own two properties that abut this, this particular property line. And I think we're just going to lose our entire privacy in our backyards as a result of this property. So thank you.
Hi, guys. I'm Tim Keeney and I'm on 10 Prentice Ave and I am directly across from where these driveways are proposed. As was stated earlier, Prentice Ave is a very narrow street. And when I back out of my driveway and I turn my wheel 90 degrees, I'm backing directly into the overgrown on the other side of the street. I look at this and I say, this is no longer a project of 262 Central Street. This is now all about Prentice Ave. The traffic I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about the snow removal. Where are they all going to go this? Now, they're not going to put it there on that side. It's all going to go on my side. And I just see this as, these do not belong in the character of the neighborhood. As we've said before, we really do enjoy our sleepy little quiet neighborhood. And this is not in character whatsoever. And the mere fact that you require a variance says that the original intent of this zoning was to keep this from happening. And so I'd like you to consider all that. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Feel free. Honestly, we're here to listen to you, so.
So my name is Kenneth Kerber. My wife Janice and I live at 240 Central Street. I think I'm not going to really say too much that's new, given what other people have already said. But perhaps you want to hear some level of agreement among members of the community. First of all, I just wanted to say we do appreciate the change in plans, particularly the saving of the existing house. We appreciate that accommodation. But I think we still continue to see the development that you're proposing as overdevelopment of that particular property. So our primary objection, in contrast with what the applicant said, is that the townhouses are inconsistent with the surrounding development. Our neighborhood is pretty much made up of low-density, single-family homes with gardens and backyards. So building townhouses or duplexes really doesn't fit the size of the property. By local standards, I would say, as was mentioned, maybe an additional two houses on that property would seem to be more consistent with the neighborhood. Also, our second major objection would be the significant increase in traffic and, and noise in the neighborhood. As you all know, our neighborhood there is pretty small. By my count, it's only about 42 houses if you count, if you use Sharon Avenue as the border. So it's a pretty small neighborhood and there's really only two ways in and out, along Central Street and then Sharon Avenue. So the additional car trips that were mentioned in the original proposal would significantly increase traffic and noise in the neighborhood. And of course, you know, it was great that the town paved Central Street a number of years ago, but as a result, speeding. So we may even be introducing a safety hazard in the, in the area. So bottom line, I think Janice and I would welcome the addition of a few new individual homes to that property. But the current proposal is out of character with the neighborhood and would result in significant increases in noise and traffic and maybe even a safety issue. So we've been living on Central Street for 40 years now and we chose to live in a quiet area because it's less stressful. And we're hoping to keep our neighborhood that way. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, ma'am. Either one, we'll give you both opportunities.
My name is Anna Fleming and I live on 26 Sharon Ave. And my one question is, will our taxes be raised or lowered because?
I'm sorry, ma'am. One second. So honestly, I know these masks are troublesome. I'm not too worried about it. If you could just take it that way.
No problem.
If you're, you know, if we have a hard time hearing you, we understand the whole ramification of this, but please feel free to take your mask down and speak clearly if you need to.
Will this affect our taxes? Would it lower it or higher? Would they be higher? That's my one question about?
I'm sorry. Could you say that again?
The taxes on our property, on our personal property. Will it affect them? Whether, would it raise our taxes more because of the townhouses or condos being in the neighborhood? Or will we get lowered taxes because of it?
Okay, so I, and honestly, I can't answer that question and I'm confident that none of the members of the board can. But Caleb can take note of that or Ms. Buto can. And that's really based on what the town assessment is. But Caleb, do you want to explain?
Through the Chair, that would, that would have to be answered by the town assessor.
Right.
I wouldn't even hazard a guess an answer on that.
So if you can certainly, if it goes forward past this evening, you can certainly inquire about that, but that's not in our scope here.
Just wanted to put it out. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Ma'am, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Dorothy Agarino and I live at 4 Prentice Avenue. The reason, and we've learned through the meetings, why we have to break into Prentice Avenue is because the fire department is insisting upon it. And I can understand that because it is a 90-degree angle at the top of the street. So if this does move forward, there's no question that we're breaking into Prentice Avenue and all this traffic is going to come down the hill. Now, Ann, who lives at the bottom of the hill, gets it all. When it rains heavily, it all goes to the bottom of the hill. Her job, God bless her, is to keep the storm drains clear. I can't imagine Steve and Joe not taking on water in their basements if we're going to excavate this property right to the property line. And if you're going to build probably not within 10 feet of the property line, it would be way too overdeveloped. I don't understand why this second oldest house in Auburn is left for dead. Sir, you called it abandoned? You abandoned it. Kathy lived in that house her whole life. And when this deal was made and Kathy moved to Grafton into one of your apartments, you abandoned it. The neighbors were concerned about Lyme disease. The grass was this high. No one cut it. Then we heard a lot of chainsaws, bandsaws, and we're all kind of wondering, gee, what's going on after a year and a half? And suddenly the doors have wood over them and they're nailed shut. So I don't know, sir, and I'm not assuming anything, but I don't know what has gone on inside the house. It's old. The Underground Railroad came through. And I know that we don't get this on the historical register overnight. But I thought at the last meeting, it was handed to Faza to come up with proof that the Underground Railroad did not come through this property, when in fact, we know that it did. So I think it's not a good idea to put 12 houses, 12 townhouses on an acre and a quarter at the top of the hill in a neighborhood that can't absorb that kind of traffic. And traffic is just one issue. You know? I just, I can't imagine that this not totally impacting our neighborhood. And the Anderson House enclosing is three apartments. It's upstairs, downstairs, and one on the side where the small driveway is. So we're looking at 12 plus three? How, structures? Three apartments in the Anderson, up, down. We've all been in and out of there. Margie and Andy were there forever and Kathy. So Kathy didn't abandon this property. Kathy sold this property. Whoever purchased the property abandoned the property. And that's a shame. And I don't know what's happened to it, but can we give the Historical Society a little time to see what we can do? There's only one house in town that's the oldest house on Stone Street and I've been through that one. And you really have, I have to bend in half to walk through the doorways. And it's a beautiful little thing. Why can't we show some respect to this property at 262? This is a shame. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please, go ahead, sir.
My name is Mark Kamerek. My wife and I own the property on 260 Central Street. We're the director of butter. Everything the last lady said is correct. I was born on 260 Central Street. I've been in the Anderson House probably 100 times in my life. It was three, it was three apartments. The Andersons lived on the first floor. They had tenants on the second, on the first, the Andersons lived on the second. They had tenants on the first and in the back was another apartment where a lady named Madeline lived for 25 years. So it was three units. Now, I notice here.
Just listen to you. These green doors, is that all green belt landscaping?
Am I allowed to ask?
Yeah, through the Chair. You just answered the landscaping question.
Is all landscaping, that's all green belt?
Yes, it will, this is a diagram, but it will respond to the zoning requirements. And so if, whatever the screening and buffering is required, we will do that.
Okay. Well, conspicuously absent is? Well, conspicuously absent is anything from my property. If it's my property, there's no friends and there's no landscaper. Is there a reason?
No, it's just not, it will be addressed.
It will be addressed.
We are sensitive. First of all, I'm not the owner of the property.
I understand.
I'm the architect. I was hired to help the owner develop the property. And it's useful being this with you so that I can take information and then consider that and make the hands to build the country.
Something I'm going to push for is, if this does go to fruition. Could you get that back up, please? I'm going to insist upon some sort of fence between, I don't want headlights going into my head. I don't want my headlights, my head is going.
No problem.
I don't want things running between the yards, trash going into the yards.
I assure you that if it goes forward, the owner of this property will have no problem screening between you and the.
Through the chair, if it did go through ZBA process, it would have to go to the planning board for, say, plan approval, they do have screening and landscaping requirements.
Can I continue?
Yes, certainly, sir.
Now, there's an elevation difference. The Anderson House is set slightly up on a hill. You're going to be, you're going to be putting down tar all through here, so this is going to change the drainage requirements of the property.
Do you see the gray areas?
Yes.
Those gray areas is what you call tarred areas, paved. No other areas are going to be paved, only what you see there in gray.
Right now, there is nothing paved yet.
Oh, I see.
There is nothing paved yet.
That is going to be addressed through stormwater management, which will be the next level when we go to the planning board. There will be, there will be many requirements as to how we avoid water running down to the neighbors. It'll all be retained in this onsite per the planning board requirements.
Because what's here now, can you get it back up again, please? What's here now, my home is over here, there's a catch basin right in front of my house that's been a habitual problem for sixty years. Whenever it rains, it clogs up the water. Now, there's going to be more drainage coming off the hill, so that's going to have to be addressed.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Deirdre Donnie from 7 Prentice Ave. I just want to say that we agree with everything that's been said here. I don't think I need to stand here and repeat it all. I do want to reiterate the drainage issues as well as the water pressure issues that exist now and will, can only presumably get worse going forward, never mind the traffic. Here I go, I'm starting to list them all. But I also have to say that no one's brought up the property value. The previous plan, as well as this plan, will change the character of the, of the property and drive our property values down, and I don't think that's fair for us to suffer that consequence because someone wants to come in and put up buildings to make money. And finally, I want to say, and I've said this at other places, I know you're not the owner and you're the architect, but quite honestly, at every meeting that we've had, it's been, you're not well-prepared. So yes, we'll take that into consideration. Yes, we'll take that into consideration. Well, you should come prepared for that consideration before it gets here, because why should we believe you? Because you come here unprepared. So it's not a high confidence level for this, for this group at all. But aside from all those other things, I just don't think it's fair that we're going to lose in our property value significantly, but thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Janice Kerber, and my husband Ken has spoken previously. We live at 240 Central Street, and we've lived there over forty years and loved it. It's a wonderful neighborhood, and pretty soon, we'll be moving on. Either we're going to downsize, or I'll go to the big moving on, and I'm not going to be around anymore. But I want to fight for our neighborhood because of the next person that's going to live in our house. And I want to, them to enjoy the neighborhood just as I have. And I think overdevelopment would not be beneficial to the neighborhood. I have no problem with people making money. I had a business in Auburn. I love Auburn. It's my adopted town, and I had to go before the zoning board trying to sell my property. And I appreciated the fact that the town was looking, the zoning board was looking at what was good for the town. And I certainly don't mind residents, single families, two or three on that property, but I just want to add my voice to saving the neighborhood, even though I'm not going to be there forever, but it's for the next people that are going to live in our home, and I want them to enjoy it as much as we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, obviously, we have a little technical difficulty here. There we go. So I apologize for that, that mic noise that was getting to me as much as I saw it was getting to some of you, too. Anybody else would like to speak? Okay. Okay, so if you've already spoken, that's fine, go ahead, but we're going to kind of move things forward at some point as well.
So I just wanted to add that the townhouses, this goes up on a slope, so all these townhouses are going to be looking over the four houses and onto our property and into our backyard. So we're not going to have privacy. So you, what you did is you took it and you flipped it. So the Butters now will have privacy, but we're not gonna. The people who live across the street, there's four houses going up there, I'm one of them. So what you're doing is, you're creating no more privacy for that neighborhood. The four houses, you're going to be able to look in my house because it goes up on a slope. You're creating three, two stories or three stories because you're doing a two-car garage, then you're putting like a regular bedroom or whatever it is in an attic on there. So they're going to be able to look in my backyard, into my house, in my driveway. Forget the privacy for the four houses on Prentice Ave, just like you did with the Butters, it's the same thing. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
So I just have a question.
If you're going to speak, you have to go to the microphone.
All right. Dorothy Icarino, 4 Prentice Ave, Auburn, Massachusetts. Thank you for allowing me to speak again. Where do we stand with the Historical Society? I understand that the Faza Corporation, it was their responsibility at the last meeting to prove or disprove that this is a historical property in town. I understand that they presented the fact that Colonel Prentis lived in that home, built that home across from Camp Gleason, and we're going to, where does this stand? Has anybody begun that process of maybe making this on, putting it on the Historical Register? So that we just can't tear it down?
Hold on one second. So we, this is the first hearing in front of this board that has been an active sort of fact-finding mission, if you will.
I see.
We have not been presented with that information prior, too, because it's always either been request for continuation, and a couple of times, they didn't show up. So I'm going to defer to Caleb with that. Do we have any information referring to that question, Caleb?
Through the chair, Town of Auburn does not have any historical preservation zones or protections in place. The building would have to be listed on the state or federal register in order to, to use those protections.
Okay.
Well, I understand that the house on Stone Street is, is the only house in town in addition to the schoolhouse where the Historical Society actually operates out of. Those are the only two in the town of Auburn. But if this is, in fact, the second oldest home in town, and it's an old farmhouse, and it sits on an acre and a quarter, what are we doing? Why are we piling all of this asphalt and houses like up on the hill and destroying the neighborhood? This makes absolutely no sense to me. Thank you for listening to us. This matters to us. I really, it's very clear to me and to the neighbors that the Faza Corporation doesn't care about the neighborhood. It's all about the Greenbacks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Please, go ahead.
I'm Jo Fontaine. I live on Thomas Ave, where the Butters behind 262. I think Nancy brought it up about the traffic. Just to give you a scope, we walk our dogs. I have a little dog and a big dog, and we walk the neighborhood from down at Meadow all the way up to Central. And during that whole walk, and we do this multiple times a day, we may pass one or two cars. That's the number of vehicles that transpose in and out of that neighborhood from all those streets. Dartmouth, Central, Sharon, Meadow, Thomas. No one comes up Thomas unless you live there. There's nowhere to go. It's a dead end. Central Street, they're right, no one uses it, but there's no sidewalks on Prentis. There's no sidewalks on Sharon when it comes up. There's no sidewalks on Dartmouth. So when you put all these other cars in, and we're walking, and someone else mentioned speeding, and speeding has become an issue on Central Street, and we flag those people down to slow down, people are going to get hit by cars. And my concern is, that's one little corner. That's all it is. We're going to put twelve, seven, fifteen, twenty, it doesn't matter how many you put in there. You're putting in more than what should be in a single-family setting. Each one of those people then is an Auburn resident, now has the right to have two dogs. So if you put in seven condos, three apartments there, you could have twenty dogs on that one corner, and I don't think we have twenty in the whole neighborhood, do we? I mean, put your hands up if you have a dog. Do we have twenty dogs between Meadow Street and Central? We don't have that, no. We could have that right on that corner, and that's a right. You can't take it away. I just don't think it's been thought out. I agree, Faza wants to develop. They bought the property, they had a mindset, I'm going to make money, I'm going to put a building up, this is what I want to do. People are going to buy it, they're going to move there, the towns are going to love it, but not the residents, not in this neighborhood. We also moved here for privacy. A dead-end street, a backyard where now these people are going to be watching the Donahue swimming in their pool in the summertime, and they're going to be watching us because this land is not flat, as they've said. So if you looked at the middle house that's got number two there, that property is set down fifteen to eighteen feet from the back line where the tree line is. As soon as you start pulling out that tree line, those people looking down in our backyard, looking in my French doors, I mean, there is no privacy. There is not a tree tall enough to do that. If you had a twenty-foot tree, but your buildings are above it, there is no way to get that privacy back. So I'm just asking the zoning board to think about the residents, please, everywhere, not just me, I have my own personal feelings, but everywhere. This town, it's a nice, small neighborhood, and that's why we've moved there and lived there for years and raised our children, and our grandchildren now come there. We don't want to lose that so that someone can make money. And all this land where they want to build on the side on Prentis, that land all slopes down to Prentis now, and it's just going to keep sloping down. There's no way to fix that, where it's not going to impact someone else unless you built single homes, so you're not affecting privacy, you're not taking away land from someone, and you're giving the new people that move in the same experience that everybody around them gets. They should have the right to a backyard that they want to have. They should have the right to a dog. They should have the right to walk the neighborhood and not get hit by cars coming in and out. And that's all I have to say. I don't want to lose our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else?
Do I get an opportunity to respond to some of the comments?
Yes, you can, hold on. Sir, could you introduce yourself, please? Are you a resident or a butter?
I'm a resident of the neighborhood. My name is Michael Barasa. I live at 5 Thomas Ave.
Okay.
I have a few questions. So I keep seeing pictures of the front of the two-story house or duplex, but are there any images of the backside? And also, are these available to the public?
So I'll let the, I'll let Caleb and the applicant answer the other questions, but as far as being open to the public, absolutely. Anything that's been applied for, any of the application information is always available at the town hall for you to view. The plans are available for everyone. There's certainly no secrets being kept, so.
Through the chair, all the plans are currently posted on the website, on the Zoning Board of Appeals page. The title for all the documents are to date today. So everything, everything that's at the meeting tonight is posted online and available to anyone.
Okay, did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay.
I did have two more questions.
Go ahead.
I would like to have in place, like, their slopage. If they plan on doing these duplexes and so forth, what is their slopage towards the back of the yard? And what is their drainage plan for that? And my, my second question is, will these houses be tied into Central Street's waterline and sewers, or will it be tied into Prentis?
Okay, so those are pretty specific questions, and I do appreciate them, actually. We're going to try to get these sorted, and we're going to have the applicant address them one by one as they, before we turn it over to the board. So those questions have been duly noted, if you want to hang on, and you can listen to the applicant and determine whether or not your questions have been answered. Is there anyone else?
Thank you.
Could you define the definition between a duplex and a townhouse? Because I'd like to know what I'm going to have right next to me. Is it going to be a duplex or a townhouse? And I don't really know the difference.
Caleb, do you want to address that? Do we have one of those particular definitions in the bylaws?
Yeah, the bylaw defines a townhome as three units or more, a duplex is two units.
Okay. So it's a pretty vague definition, but for those who didn't hear it, it's two or more units or two, or two, can't be two or less. So, or three or more, I should say, excuse me. Okay. Anyone else? So if you have anything else to say, I just want to move the meeting forward. We recognize all the concerns, absolutely. A couple of things I want to address before I allow the applicant to sort of counter is the town has no interest in this project one way or the other. People have mentioned that it's an increase in taxes for the town. That doesn't matter to us whatsoever. We're here as, as members of neighborhoods and members of the community, just like you are. We volunteer, you know, so we don't have any, any interest in whether or not this property is developed a certain way or another, with the exception of the fact that we maintain the integrity of the neighborhoods. So I just want you to know, the tax revenue has nothing to do with this. The town, so to speak, doesn't have any interest in maximizing the amount of buildings that are on this property whatsoever. That's, that's not what we're here to do. We're here to, to look at this, make sure it matches with the facts, and make a decision on what's in front of us. So you have quite a list of things to talk about. So if you want to try, I saw you taking notes, if you want to try to address as many as you can.
Right. What I would like you to consider is that.
Can you remove the mask so we can hear?
Sure, you can, you can take that down, that's fine.
What I would like you to consider is that this parcel, this lot, is equivalent to three, to eight of the parcels that surround this parcel on Prentis and on the backside, where there are eight houses. To put things in perspective, in terms of comparable size of land, and so is it overdeveloped when it's comparable in size? I don't know, that's up to you to determine whether it's overdevelopment. That's the first issue that I wanted to address. If you look at the map, if you can pull it up, and you can see that the eight houses that surround it are equivalent in size of this property that's here. It just so happens that this is a vacant lot, well, it has a house, but it's substantial in size, it's in the center of this parcel, and so that's number one. In terms of privacy, that what you mentioned, keep in mind that the, these units don't have windows on the sides, on the northern side and the southern side. They are facing the residents across Prentis, and they're, and they're really, it's pretty far in the rear yard in terms of the windows that will be there. in terms of the windows that will be there. So there is no views when it's terraced down that people will be able to look down towards Prentice. There are no windows. That's one thing that I wanted to mention. In terms of traffic, this street, Prentice Street, is a tertiary street. It's, that is, connects to, just call it a secondary street, which is Central Street. And it's not only a tertiary street, but it's quite short. That maybe, it should be a consideration for speed bumps of some sort, so that, to address the concern for cars moving fast through this neighborhood. The other thing about the issue of stormwater going down the hill, I just wanna make everyone aware that these townhouses are not only terraced, but the parking areas are terraced, and there are retaining walls between each one that does not allow the water to run down the hill. And that is important to note, that we were very aware of that, and therefore designed it that way, that it's captured by a retaining wall at each unit. I'm here to listen. I know for a fact that the owner wants to do the right thing, and that we'll take comments, and that will enhance the development. I think that it is in keeping with the neighborhood. As I mentioned, it's of comparable size. In that same parcel, there's this equivalent number of units. It's terraced and setback in two directions, horizontal and vertical, that breaks up the mass. We were very aware of that and intentionally did that. That's an additional cost to the owner, because every time you make, you pull things up and down, it costs money, instead of just making a rectangle. So the owner does care about this neighborhood. Otherwise, he would have introduced a very, let's call it a bar, extruded bar, right? And we're, wanna address screening by putting vegetation at the perimeter. And those are my responses. If there are any other additional questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm gonna do right now is I'm gonna turn it over to the members of the board, and we're gonna do a roll call, opportunity for them to speak and ask questions. So I'm gonna turn it over to Vice Chair, Mr. Maron. The floor to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I appreciate you being here tonight, and the position that you're in as the architect. What I'm curious about, I know that there are many logistical topics that were raised by the Butters. And from my view, for the board's consideration, many of those topics would be addressed during the planning board phase. And the stormwater system and the like. And that needs to be litigiously engineered. But my question is, because one of the first things that you had shared with us this evening was that your view of this development specifically was, in fact, in character with the neighborhood. And I did listen intently to your last explanation of lot size, and recognizing that this is a uniquely large lot inside that neighborhood. But I wanted to give you another opportunity to just share with us why you think that this particular development, with the number of units, and the orientation that you've come back with the revised plan, than what we originally saw, why you feel that this is, in fact, in character with the neighborhood. Keeping in mind that I viewed the neighborhood on a couple of different occasions. I'm not as familiar with it as these thoughtful people. But I've driven the streets, understand the proximities, understand the topography. And again, I wanted to give you that opportunity to just share why you think it's in character with the neighborhood.
From an urban design point of view, it is important to address... From an urban design point of view, it is important to recognize the street where people walk, their dogs, and travel, that it's the public realm, okay? The street that belongs to everyone. There are other ways of addressing this that I think are less desirable in the interest of the public realm. And the other way of addressing it is to turn inward and have one entry and have units facing each other. But that is starting to, it's stark, and it's uninviting. It turns its back on the neighborhood. And I would, that, based on my training, we desire to have enhanced the street. That's why we chose to do it this way.
Okay, so...
Hold on. Sorry, sir, you can't speak. We gave you all the opportunity to speak. He has the ability to return without interruption or feeling as though he's being pressured. Again, please keep in mind, this gentleman here is the architect for the firm. He's not the owner of the property. He's here representing the firm because this is what he's been charged with doing from the owner of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a final thank you for your response. I appreciate it. And just for the board's consideration, in my view. So one of our roles, in our scope, especially in the realm of a special permit, is to sit in judgment of, in plain speak, does it fit? Does it fit within the community and does it fit within the neighborhood? And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to give you full understanding of why I was asking the question, give you full opportunity to explain why you felt that this does, in fact, fit in the neighborhood. So thank you for that. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna reserve, but I don't have any additional questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chacolo, sir, to you.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions for you. Will you have an area where there will be a dumpster for trash? And if you do have that planned, where will it be? Because that, the reason I'm asking that is, that's an awful big truck coming up and down that road, and it probably won't be early in the morning. I mean, it probably will be early in the morning that that's done, and it will probably be more than once a week.
Keep in mind that the planning board has not seen this last revision, right? So we chose to come before you first, rather than going through the planning board. We're doing it in that direction. At that point is when we're gonna address the issues, the specific issues: stormwater, right, screening, trash, snow removal, lighting, security, right? All those issues, I'm sure, will come at us.
Has it been a subject that you've discussed?
Yes, all of those, yes. In fact, in the prior version, the civil engineer designed the whole stormwater system at a substantial cost, which is why we're going around in this way.
On page two, oh, before I leave this, is there a fire hydrant within 100 yards?
I don't have the answer to that. We did have a meeting with all the departments at some point, and for that development, what was the issue was the turnaround radius for a fire truck. But the subject of a fire hydrant did not come up, and I don't know.
That's something that I would require to be addressed.
Yes.
Along with the snow or the dumpster also. On page two, on the right-hand side, item number four. Underground sewer water and gas were not available at the time of the survey. Consultants, wait a minute. Existing sewer manholes were sealed shut and unable to be too open. No visible water or gas. No water, visible water or gas was visible. Is this property served by town water?
Yes. I apologize for the confusion that by us inserting that survey in there may have caused. I merely inserted that so that, to share that the property has been surveyed. Okay? The current civil engineer has gone beyond that survey and identified all the services and addressed that in the prior version of the 12 townhouses. Now it'll change if this gets approved.
So this property is served by town water and town sewer?
Yes. I believe so, but somebody should correct me. That's my understanding.
That we need a definite answer on.
Okay, all right. Well, I...
And I'm sure the planning board will.
Yeah, yeah. I don't want him to speak, but that was my understanding, but I may have received wrong information.
Okay. In your opening statement, you said that the existing house would be restored. That's the word you used. Give me a definition of restore.
Well, before I answer that question, I wanna say that I have not been in the house, okay? But my understanding is that the house is in disrepair. Not only in disrepair, but substantially in disrepair, and it requires some structural foundation work at a substantial cost. And the owner of the property is willing to do all this in good faith to the community. Because he owns the property, and he, by right, doesn't have to do anything. In fact, if he wanted to, he could demolish it, okay? So, but he wants to do the right thing. We came back, we're keeping the house. And restore means putting it back... Okay, I suspect there are no records of the house as it was originally. Maybe there could be some photographs. So whatever documentation is available, we'll use that to help us so-called restore the house, right? Absent that documentation, we'll use what's there as a baseline to bring the house and restore it. Did I answer your question correctly?
Yep, you did. That's it for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Costi, to you, sir.
Yeah. My question would be, you said that a parcel of land this size in that neighborhood supports eight single-family homes?
Yeah.
Right now, with the town bylaws, how many single-family homes would be allowed on that parcel?
I don't know. I don't know. The civil engineer, and he's also the surveyor. He's not with us today. I don't know. Maybe, I hope he's okay. He didn't make it, so he was gonna make the presentation. I stepped in his place, and so I can't answer that question.
That's all I have for right now.
Thank you. Ms. Bush, are you still with us there?
I'm here.
Do you have any questions of the applicant, ma'am?
Not at this time. I think my questions have been asked. Her next.
Okay. So again, I feel the same with Ms. Bush. Most of my concerns have been addressed by either the folks that have come up and asked questions or by you all on the board. So I know you're reserved. Do you have any other questions or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to follow up on one point that Mr. Chacolo had raised relative to the town water and sewer, notwithstanding having a definitive answer. Are there any current plans or any current discussion on installing any septic systems for these units?
No. We're gonna have stormwater, well, that's septic, but right now, in terms of drainage, the civil engineer is gonna design retentions areas for water.
Right, no, I understand. Separate town.
But I can't answer that question. I don't know. Sorry.
The reason why I'm asking is because either you're going septic or you're town and sewer.
No, it's gonna be sewer, town.
So if you could go to the lectern and introduce yourself, sir, if you're gonna add to the conversation.
I'm Del Costa. I'm the owner of Faza Group. One of the reasons that we don't have the drawing for the septic system is because it's a city sewer and town sewer system.
So, fine. And it's not trying to catch you up. So it's either septic or it's town. So you're verifying it is town water and sewer?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're verifying that.
Correct.
All right, so that'll be on the town water and sewer. Thank you very much. I don't have anything further at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chacolo? It looks like you might have something that's renewed your interest.
I have no further questions right now. Before we take a vote, I'm sure at the time that somebody makes a motion, I'll have a comment then.
Okay. Mr. Costi, sir?
Yeah, I just wanna say that my feeling is this puts much too much pressure on the neighborhood. Traffic, everything that was mentioned, I would be very concerned for the neighbors' property values.
What do you mean about property value?
Bring it down, people's property values.
Why?
Traffic, congestion.
I've been in real estate for 18 years. I haven't seen property value going down because of traffic. One of the things that you should be concerned is that the housing deficit right now. People are going crazy for a house.
I know that.
And you guys are objecting to...
It's not towns.
I'm sorry?
It's not towns, it's residents.
Right.
Yeah, I just, privacy, I mean, obviously, the people that are gonna be down low, people above, the pressure on the neighborhood, to me, is very intense.
Could I add to your comment?
Yep.
The housing that's along Prentice is a mixture of two and a half stories, two stories, single story, right? What we're adding here is two stories, comparable to what's on the high side. Actually, if talking about high side, across the street, there's a two and a half-story house overlooking down Prentice.
Yeah.
And there is, someone mentioned attics. There are no attics. It's a two and a half, two-story structures. That is, there are some.
Yeah, all connected, no separation. It's like cluster.
Okay. That's true.
Yeah. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. One more time, Ms. Bush?
No, I don't have anything else right now.
Okay, thank you. So it looks like that we have explored the avenues of this hearing as adequate as we need to. So do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Through the chair, if I may, before you do close the hearing. I just wanna read something in the bylaw about special permits and the board's ability. "The special permit granting authority may hire the service of a licensed civil engineering firm or other licensed professional to determine what information it deems necessary to reach the decision or to review information submitted by a special permit applicant. The applicant shall be responsible for the cost of said review." I just want the board to be aware, if they feel they don't have enough information to make a decision, they do have that ability. Because there is very little, these plans are very initial, I should say. There's a lot of information missing from them.
Could I respond to that?
Sure. Go right ahead.
Just be mindful that that is already taking place in the planning board. Right now, they hired their own engineer to review the civil engineer's drawings. So that is happening.
Through the chair, has a traffic study been done?
I'm not sure that we're subject to a traffic study.
That is the board's ability, if they'd like to see a traffic study. And also, the board, if the review's already being done, that could be shared with the planning board. It wouldn't have to be done a second time.
Okay. Seeking any clarification from Caleb's comments?
Not for me, Mr. Chairman. I'd give the other board members an opportunity if they chose. Before, Mr. Chairman, I know you were ready to close the public portion. I just wanted to, I know the second gentleman had come in slightly after, not keeping time or score, but after the gentleman that we heard from, the architect, and there's been a great deal of information in exchange this evening. So before we close the public portion of the hearing, I would just offer, if at your indulgence, the applicant, either one, for any other comments or any other information that you might wanna share with us this evening.
Well, I believe the neighborhood is very concerned about the house. In order for me to keep the house and restore the house, I need to build the townhouses. Otherwise, the house will be sitting there the way it is. I'm not gonna do anything about that. Or if the town is willing to help me with money to restore the house, would be another option.
Could you, excuse me, could you please repeat everything you just said in?
In order for me to restore the house that is sitting there on the land, the deal must be profitable, because it's a lot of money to restore the house. And I believe they care about the house. They are concerned about this house. From my understanding.
From our meetings in the planning board.
And in order for us to keep the house there, we need to restore the house. I need a project to be approved. Otherwise, the house will be sitting the way it is.
You needed, what did you say?
My name?
No, no, no. In order to restore the house, you needed...
We need the project to go through.
Okay, I just, I didn't quite understand what you said. That's why I asked you to repeat it, and I thank you.
That's what you're saying, is if the project doesn't go through, you're just going to abandon the piece of land?
No, I'm not going to abandon it.
I think we'll consider other options.
What was that again?
We will consider other options. I mean, we can't say at this point what would happen.
Anything else?
Not for me, Mr. Chairman. Again, I just wanted to give the applicant an opportunity.
Caleb, are you comfortable with all the knowledge that has been shared this evening?
I just want to remind the applicant that they do have the ability to request a continuance if they're not comfortable moving forward with the vote, if that's the way the board's going.
Right, okay, so what, Caleb is from the town side, if you will, has mentioned that you can request a continuation rather than a vote this evening. You do have that right. But at this point, as far as what we have for information here on the table, what's been presented to the members of the board, I'm confident that a vote could be taken, but I want to leave that to a discussion after the public portion of the hearing is closed. So with that being said, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Maron, how do you vote? Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cussey, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
Approve.
Thank you, and I vote to approve. Okay, so just to be clear, this is closing the public portion of the hearing, so that means there's no further comments from the applicant or the gallery, if you will, or all the folks at home, the butters. So this is an opportunity for the board to share their thoughts with each other. So I'd like just to request that you can respect that, please. To you, sir?
Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir. And I'm not prepared to make a motion at this time other than to open up for discussion. Because I think it warrants discussion at this point between the board members, if you're comfortable with that. From my perspective, I think it's an ambitious project. I struggle sincerely with whether or not this is in fact overdevelopment for the neighborhood. I appreciate what the applicant's trying to accomplish in maximizing a piece of property. But I struggle with whether or not this is in fact in character with the neighborhood. And I'd be interested to hear what my other board members feel along those lines.
Mr. Chacolo, sir?
On a personal note, I wish that we were in the position of going through this process after the planning board had input. It would be, I think there would be certain things that would be clearer. I have listened to some impassioned comments by the residents. I do feel that there is not undue, but an awful lot of pressure put on this neighborhood. I don't, I could not in good conscience vote to approve this if I didn't know what was happening with fire, school buses. And I know that that's, we're here because of the aquifer. But we're still here to listen to the residents and how they feel, not just how they feel, they've brought up some very good points. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Mr. Cussey, sir?
Yeah, I feel the way the lot sits, it's just, the people down in back, it sits way too high. The way the water runs off that hill. There's just too many issues for that size of a project. And then the cluster housing, everything. You know, it's not cluster housing over there. They don't have rows of houses like that, all stuck together. I don't think it suits the neighborhood well at all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I am. Even though we've gone through that process already, the petitioner has, we don't have to close the door if there, if we could, I don't know, let it go with a change of plans. Without denying this, there's always a chance these plans could change to be something that was acceptable to us on the board as well as the residents.
Mr. Chairman, and I want to be sensitive to all the board members that are on.
Yes, I was just going to say.
Before I jump back in.
Ms. Bush, do you have anything that you'd like to add for comments? This is again, the public portion of the hearing has been closed. This is the board members discussing their concerns.
I mean, I agree with the concerns that have been voiced. And especially listening to all the comments from the residents in the area, it does give me a little bit of hesitancy going forward to approve something like this when it seems like nobody in the neighborhood is supporting it. I think that their comments should be listened to and I think, yeah, I think everything else, the rest of the board, I agree with those sentiments.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, are you with us, sir? You may not realize that is, oh, there we are.
Sorry about that. No questions, no comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, something that Mr. Chacolo had brought up, which is interesting, and I do share his thoughts relative to if we had some additional material from a planning board session. One of the things that Caleb had shared, the building manager had shared before we went into close was, closed public portion, was the offer for continuance, and I wonder if that were offered to the applicant based on, it appears, which way a vote tonight would be leaning, if the applicant would be open to going to the planning board prior to us taking a vote on it. And maybe it's not necessary, but just wanting to give the applicant every opportunity to explain their case. I mean, I see our role is certainly serving the public and the residents and also being sensitive to business and providing a fair balance to them. So I don't know if that's something that would be appealing to the applicant based on Mr. Chacolo's questions of wanting to get the planning board to lean in prior to us making a final decision or whether or not that's not appealing to the applicant. And it's just a thought for open discussion.
Through the chair, if I can jump in on that real quick and just clarify a couple of things. So while the planning board won't take a vote on this prior to the special permit being issued, the application can happen concurrently. The ZBA and the planning board have the ability to order traffic studies. They have the ability to order stormwater studies. So if they're having studies done through the planning board and the board doesn't feel they have enough information to make a vote or take a vote tonight, and the applicant agrees to a continuance, those studies can be part of the zoning board process as well as the planning board process. And if there's any studies that aren't being ordered by the planning board, the zoning board has the ability to request those studies be done by the peer review agent. I just want to make that clear.
Makes it crystal clear. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so I've reserved my comments for this point. And I agree with everything, the sentiments from the residents. I recognize that they have a vested interest in this situation. It is a unique pocket neighborhood, if you will, of, you know, relatively small-sized homes, not all, but mostly. I've walked that neighborhood numerous times with my dogs over the years as well. I don't live far from it. I am not a resident of that particular area, but I'm only right down the street. It does have a certain character that I think would be affected by this particular project. I also, I respect the applicant's ability to be flexible in terms of restoring the home because we do have, I think we're just losing that kind of character. We don't have the ability to do that. I also struggle with the fact that the owner of the property has a right to develop that property. And I, personally, my thoughts are that if we were to allow this project to move forward as it stands now, we are not maintaining the integrity of the neighborhoods and the construction itself does not fit with the original sort of, the look and character of the buildings that are there. Had it been six cottages, you know, I'm just saying, I don't really know how to describe it other than that, with, you know, driveways and a one-car garage type of thing, which what a lot of the residents are there, I would probably just stamp this thing and send it through. But I just think that the particular design of the buildings themselves don't lend to the additional construction in the neighborhood. That's what I struggle with. I think there were several issues on the plans that a resident brought up this evening that were not addressed. And given the fact this is our third month and yet first sort of mining session on these plans, I struggle with the fact that it's been three months and this is the first discussion we're having on these plans. And again, I'm just, this is just, you know, our closed discussion, the tapping in the public forum, and that's, those are the things that I struggle with. You know, as I write the narrative every year and at the end of the year, and we put in our annual review of how many permits we've approved and we've denied, one of the things that I talk about all the time is that we look for vigorous business development in the business districts while maintaining the integrity of the neighborhoods. I really feel that is an important part of what we do here. Because as we allow the edges of our neighborhoods to be chipped away, we lose what Auburn was originally. And with the divided neighborhoods of the highways and the encroachment of all of those things, I just feel like that Auburn itself is losing its identity to a degree. So those are the things I struggle with. And I just keep in mind, you know, for the board, like I said, we vigorous business in the business districts is great. Maintaining the integrity of the neighborhoods is, I think, equally as important. So that's where I stand with this.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, thanks for sharing your demons. I have many of the same. But I appreciate your comments and the opportunity to talk about it.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. I'm open to suggestions. Do we want to allow the applicant to come back with a different set of plans and keep this moving forward, or do you think the board is here to vote? I don't think that we should waste the applicant's time. I don't think we should waste the residents' time. And I'm certainly here as a board member every month, so whatever we're discussing is fine. But I feel like that the applicant themselves and the residents need to know where this project is moving in the next direction. So with that being said, I'm looking for your suggestions from the board. I can't make a motion. I have to request one. So that's where I am at right now.
Mr. Chairman, anytime a plan that comes across our desks is denied, normally the applicant would have two years, would have to wait two years to resubmit that plan.
Correct.
With a substantial change in the plan, the applicant does not need to wait two years.
That is correct. As long as the board deems it a substantial change.
That is correct.
It meets the threshold that the board sees as what would be considered adequate.
If you compared this plan to the original plan, there'd be no doubt in my mind that this would amount to a substantial change.
I agree.
So that having all that knowledge in mind, so that everybody knows where they stand and knows what route they're going to take and what the destination will be, my suggestion would be that this application with this plan in mind, which is what we have in front of us. Okay. My motion would be to deny the application with the knowledge that a substantial change would supersede the two-year waiting period. It could be next month.
Okay, so I agree with you. You could also, and I'm going to defer to Caleb on this one. It's something that we have not done in the past, but also, again, every hearing is unique and stands on their own. Is you could make a condition of the denial to say that, you know, we were, or at least make it publicly known in the record that you are open to substantial changes and have a deferment of the two-year waiting period. Caleb, would you agree with that statement, or at least if it was clear, at least if I said it correctly and it was clear?
Through the chair, all I'll say on the substantial change is you can argue a substantial change on both sides very easily. I would not recommend the board making their judgment thinking that they can then say it's a substantial change and not be, not be, not have a resident or someone appeal that decision of a substantial change. It sounds to me, just from being in the hearing, that traffic is a concern, stormwater is a concern. The applicant has stated that stormwater is being reviewed by a third party with the planning board. My recommendation would be to order a traffic study, review both studies, and then make an informed decision. I don't feel that there's been enough information provided to make an informed decision on any of the applications. That's just my point of view alone.
So, excuse me.
Yep, please feel free.
So are you suggesting that we continue and postpone a decision until we have the findings of those two studies?
If the board was interested in getting a traffic study done to see what the impact was on the neighborhood, is that's one of the things that you have to consider. You would have to order that and the applicant would have to agree to a continuance. You would also have to order the peer review of the stormwater, which is already in process with the planning board, so it's not going to cost the applicant any more money. It's just a matter of providing that report to you. It's a peer review by a third-party engineer of the entire project.
Mr. Chairman, that's, that, as Caleb said, is definitely a possibility. However, your statement saying, you know, we've got to let these residents know, we've got to let the petitioner know, okay, that kind of leaves us in limbo.
So that just, when I say that, when I, we are not on a required timeline. We can discuss this, I know nobody wants to, please be clear, but we can discuss this for the next three months as well. It's not really a limited amount of meetings we are required to have. It's just the fact that, you know, I recognize that the applicant has an investment in the property. I recognize that they spent substantial amount of money on plans and all the other requirements. It is a financial burden. I also recognize that the residents have the right to be concerned about where they live. Again, this is just me, again, now we're talking about having a closed discussion and we're raising our concerns to each other as members of the board, and this is just the concerns that I share. So I don't think that they weigh any more than anyone else's. And I see the the point Caleb makes is having the third-party review of the stormwater management plan and the traffic study. I recognize that. So, you know, I really, again, I leave it up to the members of the board. As the chair, I just cannot make a motion. So I really have to rely on one of the members of the board, whether it be Ms. Bush or the three of you gentlemen here, and then I can make the motion travel through. It's according channels.
So the stormwater and traffic, are they our major concerns preventing us, are holding us back from making a decision tonight?
I can speak for myself and myself only to say that those are not the concerns that I hold with this project.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I'm sorry, Mr. Cussey, you go.
I just, I would have to agree that, you know, the stormwater is not my
Major concern.
They're both concerns, but...
Yes, but that's not what's holding us back from making a decision. Okay.
I would tend to agree with that, that line of thinking, and with great respect to Caleb, and I think we all share that same affection for his expertise. And I don't do this every day. But what we have covered in the several years that we've done this, in my view, I don't need a traffic study. And I know this is blunt, but I'm just going to say it. I don't need a traffic study to... but I'm just gonna say it. I don't need a traffic study to to indicate to me what opening up Prentice Street and what's been advised here is going to do to that street. And I don't need a stormwater study to tell me what it's gonna do to the down lots on Prentice Street based on topology up there, regardless of how they remediate. And I take that from my experience in in property ownership. Uh so I I I appreciate, you know, I appreciate very much Caleb's sentiment that we don't, yes, we don't have the details of those, but I personally, just my voice, I don't need, I don't need those studies to tell me what it's gonna do to that neighborhood.
So the other thing I can add to to that, and I know that we're discussing particularly this application, but keep in mind, we know, we've all been through it. Like I said, I've walked that neighborhood a hundred times. It's a bowl. It's fundamentally a bowl. From the hill from Gleason's where also is retaining all that water where the dam was rebuilt, and then over where, you know, the back of Heritage Plaza and um, you know, the the Route 12, again, you know, it's kind of cut off, but the neighborhood is fundamentally one giant bowl. Where does water go but downhill? So, you know, however you try to move it and and get it to discharge back into the aquifer, obviously we have concerns about that. Um but you know, if you look to the, to the wooded side of the driving range even, you know, there there's a lot of water back there and that runs along that road right there as well that has, you know, and again, you you can't just go in there and change that. It's it's virtually impossible to get D E P permits once that Pandora's box is opened, if you will. Um so again, these are just by two cents, you know, walking through there. Again, I'm looking at it from a point of view of of uh, it's a difficult decision to make, but um all things considered, the totality of the circumstances, if you will, is where I'm looking at this from.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I um, I think we owe the, I I think we owe the neighbors that that have been here and through these meetings an answer. I think we know we owe the, the applicant an answer. Um it's just my opinion, and I'd be willing to make a motion.
Okay.
And I I want to be very sensitive to Ms. Bush and to anyone online that I'm overtalking.
Yes, so Ms. Bush, um I think you've, you've heard the conversation here and um I just wanna give you the opportunity, if you wanted to weigh in again, and uh share your thoughts if anything has changed before we move forward or before the board appears to be moving forward with this.
Uh no, I think you guys have said pretty much the same thoughts that I have. Um I don't have anything to add.
Okay. So um it appears as though that we have ended our discussions. Do we have a motion on the six o'clock PM applicant Fazay Management Incorporated requesting a special permit under section three-two-two-two and four-three-five-one of the Auburn zoning bylaw to build twelve townhouses on property located at two-sixty-two Central Street, Auburn, Mass. Map fifty-six, parcel eighty-two, continued from ten-twenty-one-twenty-one and eleven-eighteen-twenty-one?
Mr. Chairman, if you would add to that, that the fact that it's an amended application and it is now just seven townhouses?
Duly noted for the record, um.
Through the, through the chair, if I may, we're gonna wanna take separate votes on each, each bylaw section that you're voting on. Thank you.
I've been informed from the town side, Caleb, um that we'll do it in separate votes, so it will be three-two-two-two and then four-three-five-one. Um and also, I wanna go on record as stating that my esteemed colleague, Mr. Chacolo, pointed out, the wording in the uh description of this application is twelve townhomes, but it has been amended to seven. Okay, so that should be uh added in the record. Okay, so I'm gonna reword my application, uh request for motion, rather, excuse me, for the six o'clock PM applicant Fazay Management Incorporated requesting a special permit under section three-two-two-two of the Auburn zoning bylaw to build seven townhomes on property located at two-sixty-two Central Street, Auburn, Mass. Map fifty-six, parcel eighty-two, continued from ten-twenty-one-twenty-one and eleven-eighteen-twenty-one.
Through the chair, I'd just like to jump in. Um so the motion is going to be to approve or deny um three townhomes on property for section three-two-two, and then it's going to be for two-two-family detached dwellings for three-two-two-one. So so I can make the, I can make, I can make the motion and Mr. Chacolo can take it whichever direction he'd like. He'd like me to read it?
So my concerns here is that, um and I appreciate that clarifying, clarification, thank you, but I'm reading off of what I have here in the uh, the the notes for our agenda. Um so we are looking at a single vote for three-two-two-two, a single vote for three-two-two-one, and a single vote for four-three-five-one. Is that correct?
It is.
Okay, so we'll be taking three votes then. So those, three-two-two-one was not in my uh description, just so we're aware.
That's the amendment to the application where they change from townhomes to duplexes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt, um and I'm sorry to do.
That's okay. We're trying to sort through these things.
I understand that. I mean, very litigious, and I, I'm sorry to do so because I don't wanna ruin the chain of thought, but in 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 the midst of that discussion, uh the applicant's architect um did motion and I, I wanna give them every opportunity. Um may I ask them if if there was an additional?
So we're gonna have to vote to open the public portion of the hearing again, which is fine, but for the, for our our um purpose to be following the rules of order, that's what needs to be done.
You're absolutely right, and I know I'm asking a lot in a long, in a long.
We're here to, we're here to get to the bottom of things.
But I'd, I'd like to make sure that we give every opportunity and if my board members would indulge me. Mr. Chairman, if I can make a motion, open the public portion of the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh Mr. Maron.
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo.
Approve.
Mr. Cussy.
Prove.
Ms. Bush?
I approve.
And I vote to approve. Okay.
I apologize and thank you, gentlemen.
That's okay.
Was there additional comments, sir, that you wished made?
Yes, I uh Caleb, uh what, one of the points that he was gonna make was exactly what he said, was that this is subject to three-point-two-point-two-point-one, uh two-family detached homes and three-point-two-point-two-point-two townhouse. There's one townhouse, two duplexes. Uh but uh in addition to that, what I wanted to mention is that we are open to a continuance. Uh I understand that the main concern, my understanding is density, and we're willing to entertain a change in the density of this development prior. So we are requesting a continuance.
All right, so the applicant has requested a continuance. Um, which they have the right to do. So is there a motion?
They are open to that, and that is your request?
Yes. So with that being said, if the board is considering the um move for a continuance, then I think it would be at least wise of us to choose the traffic study and to wait for the um additional information of the peer review on the stormwater management. It just, if if we're gonna allow the continuation, that's where we're at. We have to have all of those things if they're gonna come back with another modified plan.
Mr. Chairman, might I ask the applicant the reason, your thoughts as to what will change with the continuance? If granted, what will change?
As, as I mentioned in my presentation, I'm here to listen to the community, to hear their concerns, and as a, and as a designer, take that information and make changes that enhance this development, right? And uh for for that, so that's why uh I am requesting a continuance, 'cause I know that we can modify the design to enhance that.
And yet, Mr. Chairman, the uh the road we were, that it sounded like we were going down, proceeding down, would have allowed a substantial change in this plan. Would have more, more than just um, more than just a change to this plan, it would have had to have been considered a substantial change. Okay, and that, the applicant could have come back with that. The application, the applicant would lose nothing if we continued down the road, at least in my mind, would lose nothing if we continued down the road we were going on.
Through the chair, if I may.
You may.
A reduction in one or two units is not gonna be considered a substantial change. That could be argued and um the board does not wanna put themselves in a position where where they're going to be appealed. Their decision's gonna be appealed.
What was Caleb's?
A reduction, a reduction in one or two units is not gonna be considered a substantial change. That could easily be overturned and appealed.
Losing one or two units, you said?
Correct.
Would not be considered a substantial change?
No.
But if you were to put, um and this is a hypothetical, if you were to put three or four single-family homes, that would be.
If you went from condos and duplexes to single families, that would probably be considered a substantial change. The applicant would have to reapply and start the process over.
And when you said one or two uh homes would not be considered a substantial change, is there, would fifty percent of the amount of units be considered a substantial change? Not saying that the proj, the the project would be viable at that, I'm just.
It, it could be, but it also could be argued. Continuing the hearing and having them back, come back with a plan can't be argued and the board could take their vote at that time. That, that's my only point. Thank you.
So I think in fairness, as the chair, I've noticed that, you know, we reopened the public portion of the hearing. We gave the applicant an opportunity to speak, request a continuation. I did see a couple of hands up out there. If you have anything new to add, that's really my concern. If we've already discussed the stormwater management, we've already discussed the traffic concerns that you folks all have, um those are all understood and we recognize those. If you have anything new to add, given the information that's been presented this evening, if you would like to go back to the microphone, one at a time and address those, you may.
So again, my name is Stephen Fontaine. I uh, I live on Thomas Ave. And so we've been, we've been here, I don't know how many times. We were notified by the town back in September that we were gonna have a planning board meeting that we had to attend to. Then we had a uh a zoning board meeting, and a lot of us have been here for all of those. We've attended. This is the first time we've seen Mr. Acosta here. I know he's represented by an architect, an attorney, and other time. And we continue to hear that we're just, that it's, it's gonna be continued. Can you help the audience, the board, or maybe yourself, understand when we bring closure to all of these continuations? 'Cause as a neighbor in the town here and, you know, one that's severely impacted by this, it causes a great deal of anxiety to have this kind of thing hanging out there all the time and not knowing, okay, we're, you guys were just ready to vote, okay? And then all of a sudden, the hand goes up and now we're gonna consider another continuance. That is just so frustrating, right? When is enough enough? Make a decision and let's move on. And if the applicant at that point, whether it's good or bad, if the applicant then has to, excuse me, reapply, then they gotta reapply. But at least we know where we stand and when the continuations either stop altogether or we move in a different direction. Thank you.
So I would like to address that if I could, please. So whether or not the applicant gets a approval or denial this evening, there are still further meetings to address and they will still be continued, we will still continue to have meetings regarding this project. The reason why we struggle with decisions like this as a board is because we have a deep respect for the people in the neighborhood who are also our fellow town residents, but the gentleman here this evening does have a legal right to develop his property. We have to make sure that the decisions we make stand legally, um can be defended in a court, and adhere to the bylaws that we are required to interpret. It's not that we can just decide whether we like a project or not. What we can do is try to steer a project as best we can to try to find some middle ground between the applicant and the residents and without violating the um sanctity of the town's defensibility, if you will. Because if the gentleman, if we incorrectly make a decision and they take it to housing court and they, they, we are found that we make an incorrect decision, now they have the legal recourse of action, which, again, you're worried about affecting your taxes. It's not gonna directly affect your taxes, but it is gonna affect our annual town budget if they get a few million dollars taken out of that budget as a result of a decision. So you can see where we try to make these decisions based on your concerns clearly, but also the right of the applicant to develop their property. Um you know, keep in mind that this gentleman has gone from, and again, I think you've heard all the the concerns that we've shared. Uh this gentleman has gone from not really concerned with the house to agreeing to restore the home, um dropping the number of townhomes. I, um, and you can see that he's willing to head in a direction that might be suitable for all of us. So that's the reason why we can continue this uh based on the applicant's request. If we so choose to ignore those requests, then we're not really giving you all due process and we're not really giving him due process. So that's what we're trying to do. This property will be, I need you to be understanding of this. I wish Ms. Roach was here, 'cause she illustrates these things much better than I do, but this product, this property will be developed. Um we can't control it to stop it from being developed, no more than we could stop you from putting an addition on your home or a new garage or any of those other things that you have the right to do. What we are here to ensure is that it's done with the integrity of the bylaws that are intact, with your interests and the applicant's interests. So that's where we are uh with all of this, and that's why by continuing it, we're showing respect to the process, if you will, and we're trying to come to a conclusion that will make all parties involved and concerned happy. So I need you to understand that as well. Really concerning myself here is the fact that we, anybody in this room has no control over that property not being developed. It's not gonna remain a wooded lot. I need you to understand that. I don't have the the ability to do that. If if you all got together and bought it and and took it from the applicant and chose to own it and did that, that's, that's your prerogative. But it's also this gentleman's prerogative to come here and develop the property as he sees fit in accordance with the bylaws.
Through the chair, can I just make a quick, quick response to the gentleman that came up?
Yep.
It, it's not my interest to, to continue the hearing because I want the applicant to get approval. Um my point of the continuance is if, if the board denies the hearing tonight, there's a twenty-day appeal period. The applicant then has the ability to appeal that decision and the decision goes to the housing court. Where my goal is, and when it goes to the housing court, he's gonna say, the board denied my application without seeing a traffic study, without seeing stormwater.
Right.
Reports. My goal is to keep the decision in this room and not have it go to the Worcester courthouse. 'Cause I guarantee you the Worcester courthouse feels less about the property than the people sitting up at the board. That's, that's my only comment. Thanks.
So do you understand now, I think, you know, um what I'm trying to point out is, I, I recognize all of your frustrations. I recognize the applicant's frustration, all of you folks sitting here, you know, but what we're trying to do is, again, let's keep it in the room. Let's work to a conclusion that makes everybody at least somewhat happy. Um and let's keep it out of litigation that that creates problems for everyone. I think that's what we're really trying to do. So I hope you understand that. We're really trying to work in the best interest of all parties concerned here. Ma'am, go ahead.
Uh again, Deirdre Donahue, Prince Ave. Um, you know, I think, I think we all do appreciate the board and and uh your concern for the integrity of the neighborhood as is and to keep it that way. And I think the frustration was at the last, at the last minute, the hand goes up because they're willing, they say they're willing to work and amend it so everyone's happy. However, we've said from the very beginning that we would be more than happy to see three or four single-family home goes, homes go there. And and yet every time they come back, they come back with another multi-family kind of structure. So I think the frustration is, can we, if we go for a continuance, can we get to an agreement that they'll work on a three or four um uh single-family homes that will sit right in that kind of a neighborhood and keep it similar to the way it is now?
So I recognize your concerns. Um it's certainly out of the scope and the ability of this board to do that. Um again, we have to look at three-two-two-two, three-two-two-one, four-three-five-one. Uh we greatly weigh the consideration of the neighbors and the abutters. We obviously have demonstrated that we share your concerns with this. Um but for us to tell the applicant what they can and cannot do on that lot, we don't have the authority to do that. So if there was a continuation where um you could all meet with, again, this is something that's happened in the past, we cannot endorse nor uh suggest, but I can tell you, in the past with certain applications, people have gotten together between meetings, the applicant and the abutters, they've worked things out and they've come back with modified and changed plans. I am not suggesting that you. you should do that. I'm telling you that that's happened. One good example is the Ford dealer up on Route 20. When they purchased that additional lot next to the BJ's gas station, all those abutters and the people that own the Ford dealership got together, they came back at the next meeting, and they all resolved it on their own. I can't act as a mediator. If you're asking me for a decision this evening, I have to weigh the information that I have in front of me, as do the members of the board. If you're requesting to have some communication with the applicant, then, again, that goes on to the consideration of a continuation, and then what you do after the meeting ends, we have no authority or control over. But you are certainly welcome to do that as citizens of the community, and if the applicant is receptive to that.
Can I just ask one more question? You know, I think you mentioned the substantial change, and what would be, come about as a substantial change, or be considered as a substantial change? My concern is, and I apologize, I can't remember your name, that you mentioned that if you didn't have those structures, those multifamily structures, you can't afford to renovate that property. And I just want to say that actually, it sounded like a threat to me, and I didn't appreciate that. And I do think that that means, if you translate it all, it means that whatever they come back with may well not fit a substantial change, because you mentioned three or four homes as a single-family homes. And that's all I wanted to say. You look perplexed to what I was saying.
I'm sorry?
You look a little perplexed. Did you understand what I was talking about?
I do, yes.
Okay. I thought you were looking like you weren't sure.
No, 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 I was not. And I understand where you think, as though the presentation on behalf of the applicant may have appeared to be, as you said, threatening. I personally understand where you're coming from. I don't think it was intended to be that way. I'm not speaking on behalf of the applicant at all. I think it has to do with the fact that, you know, it just, his presentation at the moment. I don't think he was threatening to say that the, what he was trying to say is, if he cannot develop the property with a certain amount of potential income, then the house itself, it doesn't make financial sense. I think...
Yes, I understand that point, but what I'm saying, in essence, then, the substantial change that you mentioned, that would require to come about as a substantial change, would then not allow him to get that extra money that he feels he needs to be able to renovate. So it feels like a kind of a catch-22. So either do it with multi-dwellings, or we don't. And I, that, I don't like that choice, is all I'm saying.
And again, I'm not defending the applicant, but I can tell you from my experience and being on this board for, I'm coming up on 12 years now, building a new property versus gutting and renovating an old property, particularly one that's antique, you're looking at probably almost very close to twice the cost to gut an old building out, because you have the labor to gut it out, you have to bring it up to code, as you mentioned, there's foundation issues here, and then to restore it, as the architect mentioned, it's a substantial amount of money, it's a long-time investment. And, again, I've done it with my own home, and I know that I don't recoup the amount of money. When I put X amount of dollars into renovations, you only get a certain percentage back. That's just the way it works.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so before we entertain any additional public comment, I'm going to recommend, I think we have a substantial amount of information here. We've gone down a couple of different rabbit holes. We've had some information come forward from Caleb to realign some topics. May I recommend, and no disrespect to the gentleman that's standing, and so if we want to take one more public comment, and then I'm going to suggest that we pull ourselves out of public comment and reconvene.
Okay, I would agree with that. So, go ahead, sir. You were waiting, so we're going to do that one, and then we're going to move on to discussion with the board again.
So I'm Ken Kerber, 240 Central Street. So it's frustrating when things get continued month after month. But when I spoke earlier, I said that I appreciated the fact that the applicant listened to some of the concerns that came out of the meeting, and came back with an alternative proposal that was less dense than what was originally proposed. And now they're saying they're willing to take a look at that again. I mean, the way I see this, it's a bit of a negotiation between the developer and the residents. And wouldn't it make sense to continue the negotiation, maybe come to a conclusion that works for all of us? Because think about it this, if that house sits there for years and continues to deteriorate, is that good for our neighborhood? That's no good for the neighborhood either. So I think it would make much more sense, and I'd certainly be willing to meet with the developer outside of this venue, and talk about what might work for everybody. Maybe that would be the best solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you have anything new to add, I'm going to entertain one or two more public comments. If you don't, and it's already been reiterated, I'm going to ask that you have respect. Don't forget, we still have two other hearings after this hearing that we have to help other town residents with. So please, I also appreciate the fact that you folks have been sitting here waiting through this process. We will do our best to get to you as soon as possible as well. So go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, sir, Dorothy Icarino, 4 Prentice Avenue, Auburn, Mass. I don't know, this is hearsay, and I haven't seen anything in writing, but this deal went down for $500,000. Kathy, who moved into a condominium, I understand, that's worth $300,000. This property is, you bought it for $210,000? So would the town be interested in offering this gentleman $210,000 for the second oldest home in town, and then maybe we're undergoing major changes, $300,000 worth of changes at Eddie Pond at Camp Leeson? Maybe we just need to take that across the street, too, and come up with something for that structure, and give him back the money he paid? I mean, this is, no one's talked about this either. But if he doesn't have the money, and I'm talking like you're not in the room, and I apologize for that, but if there is no money to renovate the antique colonial farmhouse on Central Street, then what are we doing? I mean, the house, Kathy was living in the house, the house was not condemned. It is deteriorating, but it's been left empty for a year and a half. If you don't flush toilets and run faucets, it's going to deteriorate. So that looks like the plan, if we're out of money.
Well, again, man, those concerns you share, I understand.
Okay. No one had brought them up, and I just thought, food for thought.
I never said I was out of money.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Hold on. All right, we're losing scope of this meeting.
Yeah.
And I'm going to, I'm sorry. So, all right, as the chairman here, we're losing scope of the meeting here. We can't discuss moving buildings and moving properties and the town purchasing properties. We have no authority for that whatsoever here. So I'm going to make a motion, or at least request a motion, that we close the public portion of the hearing and make a decision.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to close the second public portion of the hearing.
A second.
Okay. Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
I approve.
All right, and I vote to approve. So public portion of the hearing is closed. It's time to make a decision on whether you want to accept the applicant's. Here are what we're looking at. We have 3221, 3222, 4351 to make three separate votes on, or we are going to consider the applicant's request for continuation. Those are the two paths we are choosing to move forward down in the next several minutes. So with that being said, do I have a motion on the floor for, should I read the 2222 and 2221 again?
Through the chair, we'd have to take a vote one way or the other on the request to continue, prior to moving forward with anything else.
So you heard Caleb, we have to either vote to approve or deny the request for continuation, and then we have to vote on 3222, 3221, and 4351, should we choose to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to accept the petitioner's request for a continuance.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept the petitioner applicant's request for continuation. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second with a condition that we, in fact, request. The studies that have been so thoughtfully requested were recommended, excuse me, by the building commissioner, traffic and...
Stormwater management. Excellent. So we have a request to accept the continuation. We have a second with conditions, as recommended by the town side, to look at stormwater management review and a traffic study. Mr. Cussy, how do you vote, sir?
I deny.
You deny?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Chacolo, how do you vote?
I made the motion.
No, but I stopped the request.
Approve.
Okay, how do you vote?
I approve.
Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
I approve.
And I vote to approve the continuation. With that being said, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Thank you.
The chair, the hearing is going to remain open as it's continued.
You're right. I apologize. We've digested a lot of things tonight. So as we have discussed before, the continued hearing will remain open for further public comment. If you have any you would like to register, please do so through the Department of Inspection Services at the Town Hall. The next meeting is January 20th, 2022. I wish you all a great end to the year. I hope you enjoy your holidays. Please understand, we're doing the best we can with this project. I think with all these things into consideration, we hope that there will be a fresh set of eyes along with a fresh new year. So good luck, folks. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we're going to give a few minutes to clear out, and we're going to get on to the 605 and the 610.
No, I mean, this, if the house gets understanding, I won't. Because he's trying to scare us into a thing.
Okay, so we have cleared the turbulence from the last hearing. I'm going to read...
I don't even make sure what he says.
Oh, unmute, correct. Thank you. We are unmuted. Okay, so on to the 605 hearing. Applicant Clara Agreta requesting a variance under Section 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for front setbacks on property located at 17 Rock Ave, Auburn, Mass., map 24 parcel 116. This is a continuation also from 111821, which means this hearing was previously opened. We do not need to vote to have it reopened. So we're just going to go ahead, have a seat, please, ma'am, and if you could give us any new or updated information, or what you may have that you are presenting this evening.
Mr. Chairman, before the hearing starts, I just want to let the board know that I'm an abutter to that property.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if Mr. Jones needs to be brought forward.
Okay, so I appreciate that. Please accept my thanks for your disclosure of that. Mr. Jones, are you still with us, sir?
I am.
Excellent. So as the chair, I'm going to move Ms. Bush back to being an alternate member, and I'm going to move you forward as being a full-voting member for this particular hearing.
Thank you, sir. Do we need a formal refusal for Ms. Bush?
A formal recusal? No, I don't believe so, because she won't be voting on it. I think it's adequate just being notified that during the meeting that she is an abutter, and then she, as an alternate member, will not be voting on the outcome of the hearing regardless. So I think we're okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So I yield the floor to you, ma'am, and I do apologize for keeping you waiting as long as we have. But go ahead.
Hi, my name is Clara, and I live in 70 Rock Ave. This part, I think during this year, I decided to build the front porch in my house with my husband. So that was when COVID and everything was closed, and I never done this before. It was my first time building something with my husband at home. So, and when I bought my home, I didn't have the measurements of my land. So when I decided to start the plan, I called here many times, and they said, "You have to go online and apply for a permit." I said, "Oh, okay, that's what I should do." So I work in a hospital, UMass, and a patient of mine, he helped me actually go online and get the permit, because I didn't have idea how to do that. So when I went online and got the permit online, I thought I did have the number, like, to that okay for me to start everything. So I did, and I didn't know someone had to come to my house and do everything, review everything with me. And so when I submit the permit, I did put the measurements. I didn't brought the paper with me, but I have it in my head. And I think I went over four, three or four feet, thinking like it wasn't the line of the next neighbor's front porch. And I built that thing. It wasn't done, and no one came from the town. I didn't hear anything from the town. So for me, it was okay for me to continue and keep building that. So one day, I forgot what they was, they left the orange sticky note saying, "Stop the construction. You need to contact the town," so which I did that. And I called them, so that's when I think Gary came home, and I said, "Listen, I need to do something. I built all this." And I didn't know I went over, but I didn't know I went over until I sent to measure my land. I thought it was, it is inside my property, but it's too close to the line for the town, which I thought that was all the way, it was mine. So I didn't know. So I'm here to see if I can still keep those without interrupting the law, you know, because it would be terrible to take those, get all that thing apart. I spent a lot of money, and I don't know if I can keep it or not. But whatever decision, I, whatever happens, I will follow.
Okay, thank you. So I think, Caleb, do you have any additional information you'd like to add before I turn it over to the board for this particular property?
No, I think the applicant made it pretty clear. What happened was, the applicant applied for a permit. Permit was not issued. We requested a site plan. The applicant went forward with construction prior to giving us a site plan or the permit being issued. We learned of it, put a stop-work order, and advised her that she should get the site plan. Once the site plan was done, it showed that the porch is 16.9 feet from the street, or the front lot line, it needs to be 20 feet. So the applicant's before you for a variance for 3.1 feet of the front setback.
Okay, great, thank you. So I yield the floor to you, vice chair. Do you have any questions or concerns of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here, ma'am. You constructed the porch yourself?
My husband and I.
And...
And my daughter.
And there were, was there anyone from town? I know Caleb had just confirmed that there was not a permit issued. But did you have anyone look at it prior to essentially them asking you to stop?
No, no.
No one looked at it at all?
No.
So my only question is, that initial permitting process, when you said that you had a coal worker that was trying to help you file for the permit?
No, it was a patient of mine.
A patient of, okay, I'm sorry. So I don't mean to mischaracterize. So in that process, doesn't sound like you actually applied for the permit during that process, then?
I did. I went online.
You went online?
I went online, and he helped me type everything of the measurements, and I pay it with my car. He did all that, because I was just talking to him, and he's so excited... He did all that because I was just talking to him and he's so excited. I said, oh, I can help you with that. I said, okay. But I mean.
And I'm just trying to reconcile what Caleb's office received.
Through the chair, I can clarify a little bit. So the permit was applied for, for the porch. During my initial review, I requested, by email, I requested a site plan be submitted to learn what the setback was going to be. And that's where it kind of fell off and that wasn't done by the applicant and they proceeded with construction. Then when we learned of that, I think we got a complaint. We learned of the construction, went out and advised them how to move forward.
Thank you, sir. And thereby this would require a variance to give her.
Right, it's three feet.
Relief of three feet. Okay, all right. I don't have any additional questions at this time, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if there are any butters. It doesn't appear that.
It doesn't appear as though. We have, just for the record, because we don't always get to see everything on the television. Do we have any butters present that would like to speak? Hearing none, seeing none? Yep, okay. Mr. Chikolo, to you, sir.
Yes, through the chair to Caleb. Have you at this point inspected that porch? And if so, is it structurally to code?
Through the chair, I personally have not inspected it. My inspector's been out there. If the variance was granted, we would move forward with the permitting process and it would have, any corrections that were needed would have to be done at that time. But I can't, I can't say if there's deficiencies or not, but that would be addressed after the variance was issued, if it was.
Currently, do you know of things that would have to be done to it?
I don't know of any major hurdles other than the fact that it's within the setback.
After speaking with you and some clarification by you, is there a roof on this? Structurally, what would be required if the roof were removed?
The roof?
Yes.
It needs to be removed? It has to be removed, you say?
In order to meet the requirements, you would have to remove the roof. You would need a variance if the roof stays.
Just so the applicant understands uncovered steps or porches are allowed to be built in the setback. Once you add that roof, that's when you have to meet the setback. So that's what Mr. Chikolo is trying to convey to you.
Then you would have, go ahead.
If it were a deck?
Yes.
It would be, once you put a roof on it.
If you, now that you've got that and you're asking for a variance, you've got to meet the requirements of a variance.
Yes.
I viewed the property myself and I don't see, one of the things you need is, the requirement is topographical and I don't see, I did not see any there, any reason that the topology would allow you to be granted a variance. So if the variance were denied, you would have to remove the roof.
It will be a bad thing to do.
What's that?
It will be a bad thing to, a bad thing to do to remove the roof because when my little girl is coming from home and it's raining or it's snowing, and little girl's neighbors, that's what the reason I did it is because she could be outside playing with, playing with her little friends without being inside the house.
I'm not doubting that it would be a good or bad thing to do.
Yeah.
I'm trying to bring you into alignment with the rules of a variant and the bylaws of the town of Auburn. I don't want to be, I don't want to tell you that I can sit here and say, you did it, you didn't get a permit, but you're a nice person and we're going to forgive you. I don't want to sit here and do that. I'm not going to. There's, to fix the problem, to fix the problem, we could give you a variance. It would be, there'd be no reason to give that variance and all the people, I mean, we would either give them or deny them and there are people we've denied, okay? Or tell you, you have to correct the problem. And correcting the problem would be, if you remove the roof, you don't need a variance then. But I don't, if you could show me or tell me that there's this big, there's this big ledge in the front yard, which there isn't, I can see that, that there is a reason the topology would allow me to say, oh, okay, we know it's not to the town's detriment that, which is also one of the reasons. And it's not a pressing economic reason so that the topology is what is the key here. And I don't see that. Now, I don't see a reason to be able to grant you relief from that bylaw either because to do that is the variance. That's what does that. I can't, I have no road to go down for you. I can ask my building inspector, because something just popped into my head. So you wait one second. Through the chair to Caleb. If that were a partial roof, would that satisfy?
I think removing the roof is stretching it already. What the bylaw says is uncovered porches or steps. So basically what the bylaw is insisting on is a landing and stairs. I think the full length of the deck is already stretching the bylaw to its limits.
Yeah. Well, I had a thought. That's all for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Cussy, to you, sir.
Yeah. Why did you not respond to the building inspector's email? When he sent you an email?
I didn't, what do you mean? I didn't, I did, I called, I didn't respond when I saw that and I started reading it and I said, oh, look at this. So I did get back to them and I call, we had, someone came over in the house, Gary, I think that's his name, Gary, the inspector. So I talked to him and I said, listen, I'll do anything, I'll talk to anyone for me to be able to keep those three steps. When he came home, he said, you can still keep the roof, he said, you just need to go back three feet back, he said, and you need to move the stairs back, he said. I said, okay. So I said, but is anything else I can do, anything I can apply to keep it? And that's why I'm here. So I didn't follow directions. I did answer those emails, not by the email, but I called the number when they, when they left them in there. And since then, I've been in contact with them. And one thing they do, they send mail to my, I am from West, my hometown is Westboro. So they went sending mail to Westboro because when I called here, they said they didn't have the 17 Rock Ave. And in my file, they were sending things to my house, my mom's home in Westboro. So I said, oh, so I asked them to fix that, to put that I live in Auburn, in 17 Rock Ave and send everything in there. So since I called them and I did that, they started sending the mail and all that information to my home, not back in Westboro. I didn't got that mail from Westboro until I got that letter from outside.
So originally, the email?
No, I didn't, I didn't receive it until after that.
Email would have nothing to do with address.
Through the chair, all communication is based on the information that's provided when they apply for the permit. So they enter their email address, they enter their mailing address and that's how the communication goes out. As soon as I do the review online, there's an automatic email that goes out and it will say whether your permit's been approved, denied, reviewed and is more, needed more information is needed. And that's what was sent automatically by the online system. I will say the applicant has complied with everything since we've gotten contact with her and put the stop work order on the porch. They have been cooperative from that point on, but there was a miscommunication in the beginning for sure.
In the past, we have allowed porches that encroach on the front, the setback. I just remember one that we did approve. So if this was an error, and she has been very good with responding now, and if it's going to go under inspection and make sure everything's done correctly.
Oh, yeah. No matter what that would have to be, yeah.
Okay. That's it for me for now.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, sir, are you still with us?
I am, thank you.
I yield the floor to you, sir.
Thank you. So I do have one question. To the issue of substantial hardship? So let's just, I understand this is being a hypothetical, but I'm going to go ahead and ask anyway. So let's say the construction hadn't happened yet. What would be the substantial hardship if the board were to say no and action had not yet begun?
So I think that question would be to the members of the board rather than the applicant. So I think Mr. Jones is raising the thought to the board that what is the financial burden here of, I'm assuming removal of that, I think is what he's referring to.
Yeah. No, no, Mr. Chairman, that's not the question that I was asking.
Go ahead then.
So if everything were happening in the appropriate order.
Sorry. Yes?
What would, what would be the law if the board were to do allowing the encroachment to the 20-foot zone?
Oh, right, okay. So what he's saying is if she had come before with the application, it happened in the correct order?
She wouldn't have, for my, for my vote, she would not have been granted the variance.
And again, I think I talked with, you know, Mr. Cussy had mentioned that we've allowed, and I know it's a case by case basis. But you know, we have allowed people to put porches on their homes based on the encroachment of the setback by a minimal amount, so.
Right. And this may or may not have or would have or will meet that type of hardship criteria, if I can use that word, okay? But if it was done in the correct order, that Mr. Jones is asking, it would, we wouldn't be here. That's not to say that what Mr. Cussy has just brought up does not have merit. Because we've already filled up the tank with the wrong gas, but.
So essentially what Mr. Chikolo is saying is it's a scenario of asking for forgiveness instead of permission.
That's right.
Because knowing that permission would be denied.
Yeah.
And so forgiveness in the rearview.
But I don't, I don't believe the applicant here is looking for forgiveness in the rearview with any malintent. I do believe it was with the best of intentions.
I don't disagree with Mr. Chikolo.
And the fact that it's still 16 feet from the road. If it was four feet, it was only six feet from the road, I'd maybe have a little more of an issue, but it's still 16 feet back, so.
And I agree with Mr. Cussy's sentiment as well as that, you know, even if, let's just hypothetically, if the town was going to go in there and put four-foot sidewalks in, it still doesn't have an effect from that point of view. I don't see any risk of, of loss of access in terms of emergencies or natural disaster or any of those other things, which again, I know we have setbacks for other reasons, but my sentiment is that I don't see any real risk to the impact of the neighborhood, you know, or the intent of the bylaw.
No, and Mr. Chairman, I do not either, but as I said, I can't say and I won't say that I'll give the variance based upon
Right.
the full criteria. Okay, but as, as a human being with a heart, albeit it's had some work done on it.
It's still going.
I can see that there is need for compassion.
What do you think, Deb, Mr. Jones?
I think you agree with some good points there and, you know, I think the absence of a butters here said something. And I think the absence of a butters minimizes the value of my question. I would be able to hear those.
So I will actually go to Ms. Bush. As in a butter, Ms. Bush, and not a member of the board, do you have any concerns that you would like to address since you probably were duly notified of this hearing?
I was, I have no concerns.
Okay, so as in a butter, Ms. Bush has stated that she has no concerns. So that's good to know. Thank you very much, Ms. Bush, for your input. Mr. Jones, do you have anything else you'd like to add or are there other questions you would like to query on?
No, I just want to say thank you for redirecting my attention.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You may.
Risking the fact, well, why break the streak now? I've been that guy all night. But I absolutely agree with all board members and thank you, Ms. Bush, for stepping forward as an a butter. I think there was zero, the complete absence of any malintent of what happened here. This was, this was a very innocent mistake. Having said that, I will just say there is not a topology or any other rational reason why this would pass as a variance litigiously. Because we have that criteria. That does not mean that I'm opposed to, you know, sharing the compassion that's already been noted, but it's unfortunate in my view that this happened and that they're asking for forgiveness for this step. But I don't see any negative impact to the area. And I think Ms. Bush confirmed that. But this, I'll just, for the record, this does not meet the criteria for a variance.
Duly noted. Caleb, one more to you. Does the town express any concern with the application at hand and as it applies to degradation of the integrity of the bylaw?
My only comment would be what it normally is, is I don't have any opinion one way or the other on the application. I'll state that there are other homes on Rock Ave that are within the setback. The right-of-way is almost completely on the other side of the road, so meaning Rock Ave is built to their house on the right-of-way. So all the space that the town owns, most of it is, 90% of it is on the other side of the road. So I don't think that it would affect the right-of-way in any way.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do you have anything else you'd like to add, ma'am?
No, whatever happens.
Okay, so I think we have satisfied our fact-finding mission. Do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Second, thank you. Mr. Marin?
I approve.
Mr. Chikolo?
Prove.
Mr. Cussy?
Prove.
Mr. Jones?
Prove.
Thank you, and I vote to approve. Public portion of the hearing is closed. Do we have any further discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, for a point of discussion, and I appreciate you after my comments asking Caleb, but I just, I just ask one final time. Approving a variance under the conditions that in our view does not meet a variance, is there any legal jeopardy in such a decision?
All decisions made by the ZBA are appealable for 20 days. Once that 20-day period is over, then the decision is recorded at the registry of deeds and I don't believe it could be challenged. I hope that answers your question.
It does. What was that last comment?
Once the 20-day appeal period is up, then the decision needs to be recorded at the registry of deeds. then the decision needs to be recorded at the registry of deeds and it goes with the property. So if the property is sold, they have that 3.1 variance continues on with the property.
Once that appeal period is over, then it locks it in. And it's not an issue that can be appealed.
I would say that's correct, yes.
Thank you very much. And I want to yield to my board members for any other comments, but I'd be willing to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the application with standard conditions.
I'll second it.
Excellent. So I have a motion to approve the 605 Clara Grade requesting a variance on the second 5-4 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for front setbacks on property located at Seventeen Rock Ave, Auburn, Mass., MAP 24, parcel 116, which officially, for the record, is a continuation from 11/18/21. I have a motion to approve from Vice Chair Maron, and I have a second from Mr. Chacolo. So per our requirements of roll call vote. Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
I will also approve.
And I vote to approve. So again, with standard conditions and ensuring that it is inspected to the satisfaction of the Department of Inspeccional Services. You're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck. Okay, so I think we can move along here to this very patient gentleman. We have a 6:10 PM applicant, Remodel Works LLC, requesting a special permit under section 9312 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an accessory apartment on property located at 24 Carter Drive, Auburn, Mass., MAP 26, parcel 42. So I have a motion to open the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Mr. Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
I vote to approve. Mr. Jones, would you like to remain with us for this particular hearing? Or do you have any reasons why you may have a conflict? Or would you prefer to yield back to Ms. Bush?
I can go either way, sir.
Okay, so I think just in the interest of time, we will keep things as is, as long as Ms. Bush has no issues with that. And then we will continue for opening the hearing. So I yield the floor to you, sir, if you'd like to describe what you're trying to accomplish.
Sure, thanks very much. It's been quite the thoughtful discussion this evening, and I'm happy to be here. So what we're proposing to do is our clients currently own this single-family home at 24 Carter Drive. They are proposing an in-law apartment above the garage. So right now, it is a two-car garage. We're proposing an approximately 11 by 22-foot addition onto the back that's going to serve as the common area slash stairway slash storage hall, kind of the transition space between the two units, if you will, leading up to a stairway that leads, that's going to be an in-law accessory apartment. The plan is, if it makes a difference, I spoke to, not the commissioner, but the building inspector, and he indicated to me that they viewed it slightly different if the plan is for family to live there versus a separate tenant. So it is going to be family that's living there. The feedback I initially got from the building department was that we needed a second means of egress, which we accomplished. If you look at page A4, the first means of egress is obviously down the stairs into that common area. And the second means of egress is through into a doorway into the existing home. So that's how we accomplished that. And I believe this is going to be aesthetically pleasing. It doesn't change the look of the house that fits the neighborhood. It still looks from the street as a single-family home. And that's the long and short of it. We meet all the dimensional requirements as far as the setbacks and any other zoning concerns. We're in residential B. The side setback is the only one we come close on. It's a 10-foot setback, and we're within 13 feet, even with the proposed covered porch that we're showing.
Okay, great. Obviously, we have no butters present, since we're the only ones left in the room. I'm going to go ahead and yield the floor to you. Mr. Maron, do you have any questions or concerns of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to the public. Have we opened a public hearing?
Public portion.
Have we opened a public?
Well, just for the record, in case we don't, do I have a motion to open the public portion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Okay, so Mr. Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy? Mr. Jones?
Approve.
And I approve. Okay, just for the record, in case we did or not.
Thanks for keeping us honest.
It's getting late.
Yeah.
No, thanks for keeping us honest, for sure. Thank you for being here, sir. Did take a look at the property. And my only question is on square footage. So the apartment itself that's being proposed, it's on the second floor above the existing garage, correct?
Yes, sir.
So the plan is to peel that roof off, go up commensurate, same level as the elevation of the house on the right?
Yes, sir. The subfloors will match, the elevations will match. We have plenty of ceiling height in the garage to accommodate that. We'll have to, most likely, we'll have 12-inch TJIs to support the structure. It'll all be, you know, reviewed and engineered, but we'll have plenty of height to meet all the dimensional requirements.
Where did you land on square footage of the accessory apartment?
The square footage of the accessory apartment is... Do you mind if I take out my phone to do a quick calculation?
Oh, go ahead.
No, no, do it in your head.
It would take even longer.
I got it. My estimate is like 620. That's without the shed.
Yeah. That's what I was trying to figure.
I want to, if you want to ask him, it's fine.
Based on rough numbers, I'm coming up with right about 600.
Okay. And just, so you're only considering the second floor?
Yes, sir.
As the accessory apartment? So there's a bump out, the existing garage, and then there's a bump out first level on the back of that garage?
Correct.
To accommodate the stairs?
Correct.
And storage?
Yeah, so there's storage, a hallway and a stairway. That's basically kind of, the homeowner, so the current owners of the home are going to be moving into the accessory apartment, and they're selling the home to their son and daughter, or their daughter and son-in-law. So they're going to be occupying the main home with their family, and the current owners are going to be occupying the in-law apartment, their empty nesters, their snowbirds.
Honestly, to me, that's an ideal situation. That's what I would love to do.
Right.
But I don't have the care of the big part of the house anymore, so I get it.
Exactly. No, it's going to work out well for all parties involved. But the homeowners expressed that they wanted to make sure that they had their private space. So that was the thought behind designing it the way we did, with the back and having that common area and having that be kind of a separation, like a gray area between the two homes.
And the only final question I have, so the stored space and the stairs, whatnot, that's not living space, that's not heated space, correct?
The storage will not be. The, if you look at the plan, the doorway in the middle between the two spaces labeled Hall, in my mind, that would be the door that defines the two spaces, if you will. Yeah, there would be an exterior door coming into the porch. So technically, I would define that as condition space.
Okay. And so we'd include that in calculation? But I think we're well, I mean, I think I landed at about 6 and 1/4, give or take, but I think we're still under the seven. But I'll reserve any other, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Reserve, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Chacolo?
Would you go over again the means of egress on this for me?
Yes, sir. So the primary means of egress will be down the stairs from the second floor out the main entrance on the side porch. The second means of egress is located within the bedroom.
Wait a minute, this stairway here connects to a side porch?
Correct. So right now on the screen, it is the second floor plan. If you toggle down to the first floor plan, sir, if you don't mind? Should be the previous page. So that stair at the bottom leads to the hall, and just to the left is the porch.
I think I saw it on one of the pictures. Yes, I did. Okay. That's the primary means?
Yes, sir.
And the secondary means?
So if you go back to the second floor plan on page A4, located within the bedroom, there is a door from that bedroom into a bedroom in the existing house. And that's the secondary means of egress.
Through the chair, just before we go too far on that, the second means of egress cannot exit through another dwelling unit. I appreciate that it's family occupying both units, but that can change at any time. So we're going to have to work on that through the permitting process, where the second means of egress cannot go through another dwelling unit.
The second, say it again, please.
The second means of egress cannot exit through another dwelling unit. In other words, you can't open your door into another unit because it's very easy for that person on the other side to block that doorway. It has to exit to a stairway or to an exterior court, something like that.
The outdoors.
So they both have to have direct access to the outside for the purpose of emergency evacuation or entrance for safety personnel.
Understood. I did come up with an initial design where we had a second means of egress off the back bedroom. The homeowner detested that idea. They didn't like the idea of a doorway directly into their bedroom from the outside. So we came up with this plan. I did call the building department. I spoke with, I forget the gentleman's name I spoke with, and he's the one that told me the stipulation that because it's family, that it would be allowed.
I'll talk to Gary and see if he made that statement. But that's, I understand it's family today, but that could change tomorrow. They could rent the house or sell the house and.
Understood. Just, may I explain what my initial thought was for the second means of egress? So if you look at the back bedroom facing the backyard, there's the triple window there. So my design was to take the window nearest the bathroom and make that a 36-inch egress door that led to a landing and a set of stairs down to the left. And then I tied in the porch that we're showing, just basically doubled the depth of that from the street so that it served as the landing for both entries.
Again, I think what we're concerned with is, you know, we talk about where our responsibilities lie, that it's meeting the requirements of a special permit, it's meeting the requirements of the square footage without, you know, going over that. And then if the board saw fit to approve, then that could be something that we could have permits pending approval based on, you know, review from the Department of Inspeccional Services and final approval. So I think it's been duly noted, and I think it certainly is important for safety. And I'm sure our fire safety personnel and police would agree. But I think that we can, as we've done in the past, it has to meet building code. So, you know, whatever, I have the confidence in the Department of Inspeccional Services. I'm sure it's safe.
Through the chair, one of the standard conditions is that they meet the Mass. Building Code. So we can work with the applicant through the permitting process to come up with something. The applicant's made it clear that he's looking to go out the back of the structure and not the front, so I don't think it would harm the nature of the neighborhood or anything like that.
Right. So I just wanted to kind of point that out, that we can, those things that we've worked out in the past. So I think, based on the vetting process that we've already done, it meets our requirements for a special permit. If the board agrees, that's the whole point. So do you have any other questions of the applicant, Mr. Cussy?
No, I do not.
Mr. Jones?
I have no questions. Mr. Moody and Mr. Maron address them.
Excellent, thank you so much. And I don't really have any further questions. So I think if the board is satisfied, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote? Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
I vote to approve.
Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
I didn't hear what.
This is a vote on the motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Approve.
Thank you. So with that being said, do I have a motion on the 6:10 PM applicant, Remodel Works LLC, requesting a special permit in the section 9312 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an accessory apartment on property located at 24 Carter Drive, Auburn, Mass., MAP 26, parcel 42?
Mr. Chairman, a comment and then a motion, if I may. I have full faith, I did recognize the comments on the second point of egress in the applicant's earlier comments, but have full faith in the building permitting process to be able to work that out in an appropriate manner. And so I'd like to make a motion to approve with standard conditions.
Excellent, thank you so much. We have a second. So roll call vote, Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote? Mr. Cussy, how do you vote? Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Approve.
And I vote to approve. Congratulations, good luck. Caleb, I'm sure you can be in contact, you can work out the details of those plans and.
Absolutely, I appreciate that consideration and the approval with the conditions. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, you're welcome. Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. It was riveting. And may I just say that Ginger was incredibly helpful through this whole process. I've gone through zoning boards before in different towns, and it's usually flying pretty blind. And she was, answered every phone call, took every in-person meeting, answered any questions I had. She was a great asset to the town.
That's excellent to hear, thank you so much. We agree, she's definitely a great addition.
She certainly keeps us honest.
I'm sure, I can see that.
We're very fortunate. Okay, so we don't have any other business on the agenda. So our next meeting is January 20th, 2022. So with that being said, we'll be in a whole new year. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to adjourn.
Second.